Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, December 3, 2018. Special meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on November 13, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on November 13, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on November 13, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Hughes has been excused. Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Orozco, I believe is running late. Oh, he's here. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see you come in. Mr. Moretti?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'd like to take a moment of silence for former President Bush as he lay rest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like everybody to find a seat if you can, if there are some. I really don't want a lot of people standing. Mr. Troply, you mind swearing in the professionals, please?
This special meeting for the application before the board, case number BA 1806, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., use variance preliminary final major site plan. Application of L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc. as applicant in One Greenway LLC and Two Greenway LLC as owners seeking use variance in preliminary and final major site plan approval to develop the property as a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility with improvements consisting of the removal of portions of existing concrete manufacturing facility, rehabilitating the existing storage bin, construction of quality control building, weight station installation of office trailer near existing office, the removal and replacement of approximately 13 acres of impervious coverage with landscaping in total of 250 trees, deinstallation, other associated improvements on premises known as Block 177, Lot 6201, formerly Lots 62 and 64, 89 Yellow Brook Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard May 7, 2018, when it was carried to June 25, 2018, with no further notice. After some discussion on jurisdiction and the recycling aspect of the application, the board took jurisdiction on June 25, 2018, and this application was carried to July 9, 2018, with no further notice. After some additional testimony on July 9, 2018, this application was carried August 27, 2018, with no further notice. After the application put additional testimony on the record August 27, 2018, the application was carried October 22, 2018, with no further notice. On October 22, 2018, after some testimony, it was carried to October 29, 2018, with no further notice. After some additional testimony on October 29, this application was carried to December 3, 2018, for special meeting, with no further notice. Expiration date, December 31, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, Nansen.
Mr. Orozco was on there erroneously, but Mr. Moretti and Mr. San Clemente are also eligible. They both certified for the videos they needed to watch.
Okay. And Mr. Orozco, you would need to certify, you know, that you saw the meeting, you missed. Okay? Mr. Butler, Mr. Gazarovski, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think where we left off, I think we were in the middle of cross-examination, if I'm correct.
Correct. And we had left off, Mr. Gazarovski had completed the cross-examination of my client and was moving on to the next witness. I'm assuming it's Mr. Kennedy, which is why I brought him up.
Okay. Let me remind you, we're previously sworn.
Thank you. Chairman, I wanted to call the witnesses for cross-examination in the manner in which I choose to do so, and I want to cross-examine first Mr. Cross.
That's... If you don't mind?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Can I remind you, you're still under oath, Mr. Cross?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Crossen, good evening.
Good evening.
The last time we were here, Mr. Chairman, as we were moving along with the direct testimony from Mr. Crossen, and I received a copy of the transcript, and it's page 17 of that transcript, we got into the issue of his providing certain information as to the equipment in question, which he stated either that he was in possession of Ms. Sutton or that he had it in his office.
Right, Mr. Gazarovski, did you provide that transcript to the board and our professionals? We didn't, I did not recall seeing it, Mr. Chair, that's just...
I haven't seen a transcript.
I think it might be incumbent on you to do it if you're going to be referring to it during your cross.
Why would that be?
Today, tonight.
Well, why would I, why, if I'm cross-examining a witness, why do I have to provide him with a copy of my transcript?
How about us? I think the question was the board.
Board? And the board's professionals?
Uh, I did not provide a copy of the transcript to the board. I don't believe I did.
I'm gonna let you call that, that's a legal call.
I'm not going to compel Mr. Gazarovski's right to cross-examine, certainly, but I'm a little concerned that we don't have a transcript if he's referring to it, that's all. Mr. Gazarovski, proceed. But again, I...
Mr. Crossen, if you recall, the last time we were here, there was some discussion with regard to certain information which you had relied upon as far as identifying the sources of noise and the various DBAs attributable to that noise. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And you recall, I believe you said that either that testimony was in the possession of Ms. Sutton at South Carolina, wherever she may be, or you had it in your office.
I believe I testified that she had emailed me an Excel spreadsheet that contained the data that I needed in order to do the modeling of the noise.
Did you have a copy of what she mailed to you?
I do.
Yeah, see it, please.
And actually, I have a copy also, I can hand out to Mr. Gazarovski, if you want. And in case, in case the board would like a copy, I also have made extra copies of this. I'm not sure where Mr. Gazarovski's going with his questioning, but if the board would like to enter these into the record, we can do so.
I would.
Sure, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Eileen. You can argue tonight. Thank you, my dear.
Always. And I mean, what are we up to?
Eight thirty?
This is eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Okay. I don't know how much.
Eileen, do you have an extra copy?
Mr. Crossen, this has been marked as what?
Eight thirty, Mr. Gazarovski.
Eight thirty.
Please, and yes, Mr. Gazarovski, and Mr. Butler, just for the moment, have your client identify what eight thirty is, and Mr. Gazarovski can proceed.
If you can just read the, read the title of eight thirty into the record. Aztec Plant Sound Power Levels.
And this is for the plan itself, correct?
Yes. Do you need a description for the record?
I don't think so.
Mr. Crossen, can you tell me when you received this document?
If you know the answer to that question. This project has dragged on for quite a bit. It was early on in the project, it was what I based my initial modeling on when we submitted the EIR.
So you had it prior to the start of the hearings?
Absolutely.
That's your testimony?
It is.
I don't see any date on this document. Is there a document which reflects when this was in fact sent to you?
I did not print out the transmittal, the email transmittal.
Now, I've gone through your testimony. With regard to this application, did you in fact visit the existing site?
Yes, on numerous occasions.
How many occasions?
I believe at least seven, but...
You know, with regard to the existing site, as I understand it, the only work that was being done out there was basically the reclamation or the recycling of the existing concrete pipe that was on site, and in addition to that, whatever activity was being conducted by L&amp;L Paving under the terms of its Plowing Board Site Plan Approval. Would that be correct?
I have, I assume so. I have no direct knowledge of the exact sequence of events.
Well, when you were out at the site, did you also perform some various testing procedures?
I did.
What type of a device did you utilize to perform those testing procedures?
I used a Larson Davis 831 noise meter.
That was it?
Yes. That was described in my, in my report.
Okay. Now, you yourself did not, let me ask you this. Prior to your giving testimony and prior to your preparing your report, did you have occasion to visit any other asphalt plant site to perform any testing?
I have, in the course of my career, been on other asphalt plant sites, but I did not perform any noise monitoring pursuant that was utilized in the work here.
Let me just kind of rephrase the question. While you were employed with regard to give testimony on this matter, did you have occasion to, in addition going to the subject site, did you go to any other asphalt plant site to do any testing?
No.
Okay. Now, can you tell me when it was and where it was that you might have done some testing in the past?
Objective, I'm not sure what, can you qualify that?
Cross-examination?
Well, I mean, you asked a general question, that's a, when has he ever done testing in the past? So I'm just asking to qualify what your question was.
You're calling him as his expert. He testified that during the course of this particular job which he has, he did not visit any asphalt plant to do any testing, so I'm asking him when he did it and where he did it.
Where he did what?
What?
Where he did what and when he did what?
Where he did, where he did noise testing.
Yeah, but that could be a broad question, Mr. Gazarovski. Did he, are you asking him, did he test any other asphalt site?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's a specific question. That's all I was trying to, I was just trying to get a specific question.
To the best of my recollection, it was probably in the 1990s somewhere in Westchester County, and I don't remember the exact location.
That would be, on what occasion you have done that?
Done what?
Done the testing that we're speaking of, that you are utilizing perhaps as your experience for conducting whatever testing you did as concerns this site?
No, actually, the, I didn't rely on any testing for this site. I relied upon modeling of the information that I got from Aztec. The other portion of the noise related to truck traffic, which I have monitored at hundreds of locations throughout New Jersey.
That wasn't my question. My question was with regard to the operation of the plant. You've testified that you did not do any testing as to the operation of an asphalt plant, either on this site or any other site subsequent to the application being filed by the applicant in this matter.
That is correct.
Okay. And you testified that perhaps, what would it be, 25, 30 years ago, you were at a site in Westchester, correct?
That's correct.
Now, when you went there, what type of equipment did you utilize to measure noise?
I think at the time it was some kind of B&amp;K monitor that had... Bruhl &amp; Keier B&amp;K monitor at that time.
What kind, was that a handheld device or was it some kind of a computer model?
Well, computer models don't monitor noise levels. Devices monitor noise levels, and it was a handheld device that you could either hold in your hand or you could mount it on a tripod.
Okay. Now, when you did that, 35 years ago, if it may be, or 30 years ago, whatever it was, the only device you used at that time to measure noise was a handheld device, correct?
It was a device that could be held by hand and could be mounted.
Or put on a tripod.
Right.
Now, did you monitor, or did you test, or did you measure noise from each and every aspect of the manufacturing equipment that was on that site at that time?
No, I did not.
Okay. So this is your first, this is your first time at the rodeo, right?
Absolutely not. I'm gonna object to that question. The qualifications that Mr. Crossen put on the record were not objected to by Mr. Gazarovski.
I'm not attacking his record, I'm attacking his possible credibility.
No, there's no...
He may be qualified to testify, I don't just admit he's credible.
Is credibility as a noise expert?
I think, I think, with the exception of perhaps the comment, I think the question is proper, and I think Mr. Gazarovski should be permitted to test the experience of this gentleman, and I think it's up to the board, quite frankly, to weigh the credibility, but ultimately, I think it's reasonable for cross-examination.
Let me, let me also say that I do apologize to the board with perhaps what might be interpreted as a sarcastic comment. Let me rephrase the question. Other than you're utilizing a handheld or tripod-mounted device perhaps back in the 1990s while visiting an asphalt plant, other than that, have you ever before embarked upon the challenge or the protocol you were given to study this site and prepare yourself to give expert testimony?
All the time. The kind of...
With regard to asphalt plants?
You can't just, a noise source is a noise source, with all due respect, Mr. Gazarovski, that when you approach a project, it is a noise source. There are multiple aspects of it, and you have to deal with those aspects, and whether it's a concrete plant, a bituminous concrete plant, or whether it's a, some kind of warehouse, you, you deal with it.
Mr. Crossen, respectfully, we're not talking about a warehouse, we're not talking about whatever else it may be, we're talking about the operation of a bituminous asphalt manufacturing plant, perhaps listening and reading your testimony, perhaps 24 hours a day. Now, having said that, with regard to your earlier experience, you testified that you utilized a measuring device. So my question to you is, with regard to this proposed site, you have never, ever, whether it was 30 years ago or even presently, gone to an asphalt plant and yourself inducted the necessary inspections or examinations in order to present expert testimony?
That's not what is required in order to present expert testimony, Mr. Gazarovski.
Okay. Now, as I understand it, with regard to this particular matter, you have relied solely upon the printouts that were sent to you by the representative from Aztec, correct?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
What else, well, other than your handheld device, would you utilize for measuring noise from trucks?
Noise, I measured noise from trucks and I used other values from other types of equipment that would be operating on site that I had monitored at other locations, and there are generally accepted industry standards for, and I also relied on the Aztec data that was presented to me.
Let's, let's go first to, you're saying that you measured other pieces of equipment other than, did you use a handheld device for measuring that?
I'm not sure what you're asking for, Mr. Gazarovski.
And I, my understanding is, is that you've testified that you had three sources of information. One would be the handheld measuring device which you utilized to measure the noise emanating from trucks, correct?
Right.
Now, second question.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to be rude and interrupt you. Second question is, I thought you said that there were either other measurements that you took or other, other reports that you relied upon, other than the material that was sent to you by Aztec?
That's correct.
Okay. What are those other tests that you performed then?
Over a period of time, have certainly monitored noise levels associated with different types of construction equipment.
I'm talking, I'm talking about this particular application and this particular site. That's what I want to know. I don't care if you monitored a front-end loader 10 years ago someplace else, talking about this site and this equipment.
It seems like you have a misunderstanding about how noise studies are conducted.
I know how noise is.
I would happy to explain it to you if you would like.
I want to know what devices or what equipment you personally monitored or took a noise reading of from the time you were retained on this project until you're testifying today, other than the noise readings you took with regard to truck traffic?
Since I've been retained, not...
Now, let's get to the Aztec information, okay? Tell me how it came about that rather than doing, now, you know what modeling is, do you not, with regard to modeling noise sounds?
I do it all the time, Mr. Gazarovski.
You know what, you know what, if you had done it in this case, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Objection, Mr. Gazarovski. I'll object on that comment.
I'll move on. Now, let's talk about, let's talk about this case.
Can we keep aside comments down?
But I did do modeling, and that's what the report was based on.
Okay. Let me finish my question. Let's talk about this particular case, okay? Would it be a fair comment to say that with regard to the modeling that you did, you relied solely on these printouts that were sent to you by Aztec?
With respect to the noise from the asphalt plant, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, now, did you ask for, or did this, I apologize for forgetting your name, did you ask her to send you any backup data with regard to how she secured these numbers?
She represented that this is what they utilized when they were doing their studies.
Yeah, but as I understand it, and no offense, man, you're testifying as an expert in this matter, and my understanding is that you have to obhine as to certain facts that you have personal knowledge of. Now, what personal knowledge do you have with regard to these three printouts that she sent to you?
That she sent an email representing that this is what Aztec uses when they get approvals for asphalt plants all over the country.
Well, this isn't all over the country, is it? This is Howell Township, New Jersey, or the township of Howell, New Jersey. Now, if in fact it's under different climatic conditions, or if it's in a suburban or an urban area, that's unrelated to this particular application, isn't it?
Well, and with respect to climatic conditions, they do not affect noise levels at the distances that we are modeling them, and in fact, utilizing the procedures that we employed using these numbers, we definitely came up with a worst-case noise value because this assumes that, I forget how many, 30-some pieces of equipment are included in the total, and it assumes that none of the pieces of equipment interfere with, that everything is projecting noise toward Cranberry Road, as opposed to those pieces of equipment that are on the opposite side of the plant and are screened from Cranberry Road by the plant itself, so that I'm quite confident that the calculations and the modeling that we did here was worst-case modeling.
Now, let me ask you this question. When you say that there were certain pieces of equipment that were screened from Cranberry Road by the building, are you saying that you did not take into consideration the noise coming from those pieces of equipment?
No, I'm saying I took into account all of the pieces of equipment and assumed that there was no shielding from any part of the plant that interfered with the noise. there was no shielding from any part of the plant that interfered with the noise. So it was though all 30-some pieces of equipment were all radiating straight toward Cranberry Road with no interference at all.
And you're assuming that all of the figures that she gave to you are accurate and correct?
And I always assume that when I am given information from vendors.
Okay, now, having said that, did you ask her to see, for example, her work product with regard to the equipment that she was looking at, the age of the equipment, the topography of the land that it was located upon, the hours of operation, or any of that, or did you simply take this document and rely upon it 100%?
The, the, you're, you're misunderstanding the document. The document is, gives sound power levels, okay, which are the inherent, what is being emitted by the piece of equipment. It is independent of climatic condition, independent of topography, independent of distance from that piece of equipment, and it is a manufactured supply number. And then you go through a series of calculations to translate that from sound power to sound level, and then once you get it to sound level, then you can calculate it as it attenuates at various distances from the source.
Now, are you telling me that all you really did then was to have her give to you all of the information?
I'm gonna object, this is the same question over and over again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gazarovski, can we just move forward?
I want to move forward. With her, what, you're saying her calculations, am I correct in assuming that all that she did was to look at whatever number there was on the piece of equipment?
Once again, I'm gonna object.
And you've accepted that as correct.
I'm gonna object, it's the same question, once again.
Yes, sir. They, they, the question's been answered.
Right.
That's what he based his model on, was, was the information given from her.
Did you ask her for any backup information with regard to any testimony that you have done?
That question's already been asked.
Well, it's not, you're right, Mr. Chairman.
It, it has been asked, Mr. Gazarovski.
Let's just simple sake of argument, that this one particular piece of equipment has on it, that when it's running, it emits 35 dBAs, okay, whatever it may be. But then you have to also factor into it the distance, the topography, and everything else.
And I...
And he answered, he answered that question.
He answered that question.
Mr. Chair, okay, Mr. Krosen, let me get this. What device did you utilize in doing your modeling to come up with these numbers you've come up with?
Once again, he answered, that's a question that's been asked and answered.
I, I used a, a computer.
Okay, what was the brand name?
We're getting repetitive here.
I'm trying to remember which computer I did it on, I have a couple of them.
Not the computer, what was the program you used to do?
Excel.
Excel software?
Excel.
And it was on averages, correct?
Pardon me?
You used averages numbers. You put in the numbers and it calculates the DBs, correct?
Yes, and there's a, you know, a formula that we've explained before, that per doubling of distance, there is a six-decibel reduction from a point source, as far as what the, what the noise level is.
And in your, your, in your testimony, and the question already was answered, did you use the worst-case scenario, that there was no, no interference between there and the roadway?
Between there and, and the receptors.
The plant and the...
Yes, that, I assumed that there was no interference, I took no credit for the berm, the landscaping on the berm, the, the trees in the neighborhood along Cranberry Road, I took no credit for any of that.
Okay.
So that the modeling that I did was absolute worst-case modeling.
Okay.
Do you attach copies of your modeling procedure and the documents you relied upon in preparing your report?
I described it, I did not attach copies.
Pardon me?
I described my procedures, I did not attach copies.
Do you still have those original documents in your office?
Where, where are we going with this one?
Yeah, they, I, did, did you supply a report?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and, 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 sorry, go ahead, I apologize.
He supplied a report, he didn't, he didn't supply the documents that he relied upon.
I, I think his testimony, where, where he, the applicant is relying only on his testimony as far as, you know, the backup to the...
The bottom one is, if I want to have my expert review, the information that he punched into his computer, I don't have that information.
Mr. Butler?
He, he does, he has that information.
Pardon me?
It's right in front of him.
Where?
It's on that spreadsheet, it's marked into the record, 8:30.
This is the information which he plugged into a computer, it's not the information that is in his computer. Mr. Krosen, am I correct in assuming that when you prepare your report, it's predicated upon, let's say, the worst-case scenario with regard to the complete operation of this plant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, did, did you make a determination as to the number of tons of product this plant can produce on a daily basis?
I'm not sure what that means. I was, I modeled the plant when it was in full operation, and that was independent of the number of tons that it produces.
Well, let me just, if I can follow up on that. You say you modeled the plant based upon a full operation, and you never went to a comparable plant that was operated...
Once again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna object, it's the same question.
It's asked and answered, Mr. Gazarovski.
He said he modeled the plant, well, what plant did you model?
I modeled...
He modeled the plant based on the information that was given by Aztec.
Then he didn't go to a plant?
And that's been, that's been asked and answered at least 12 times now.
Yes.
You did not go to another plant to do any modeling?
Again, once again.
It's been answered.
What's the answer? No, he answers no.
He answered it.
He answered it.
Now, let's go back to this issue of the modeling that was performed. In your testimony, I believe that because of the dBAs after a certain period of time would exceed 50, that the plant could, would have to cease manufacturing after a certain time, correct?
That's correct.
And now, just so I'm clear on the numbers, it's my understanding, I believe, that between the hours of, is it 6:00 or 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM, the standard is 65 dBAs?
It's 7:00 AM.
I'm sorry, 7:00 AM to...
10:00 PM, it's 65.
Okay. And then after, after 10:00 PM, it becomes 50 dBAs, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, my reading of the transcript leads me to believe that the basis of your testimony was that this plant could operate then from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM producing product?
From a noise perspective, independent of operations, yes, it could.
Yeah. So if we were to assume, based upon the records provided to us by the applicant, if this particular roller produced 400 tons of product per hour...
I'm gonna object, what does this have to do with noise?
It has a lot to do with noise, and I'll get to that.
I'll, I'll let you continue, but let's, let's kind of move it.
Well, this whole, this whole, this whole argument of the plaintiff, advocate, rather, is predicated upon his manufacturing 50 tons of asphalt for himself and possibly another 150 to sell to the public. Now, the hours of operation and how much he's producing and when he's producing it is very important, both with regard to the issue as to noise, and also as to traffic.
Well, and once again, we're not, he's not, this is not a traffic expert.
He's not a traffic...
I'm not asking you about traffic, I'm asking you about noise.
We're talking about noise, and it has nothing to do with tonnage.
Let me ask you this question, Mr. Krosen.
Or, or the production, it's just noise.
After, after 10:00 PM and after this, after 10:00 PM and after this local residential use is removed, under your testimony, this plant could operate manufacturing bituminous concrete 24 hours a day, isn't that so?
I never said that.
No, I don't, here's, here's what you said, I believe you said. We know now that it could manufacture bituminous concrete from the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, correct?
From a noise?
And not, and not...
I, I, my testimony is from a noise perspective, it could.
That's right.
From an operational perspective, I'm not testifying about that at all.
I understand that, I understand that. But your testimony is that if in fact this plant were to operate from an operating protocol from 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM, it could do so, producing whatever the number of tons per hour it could, it could produce, without being in violation of the noise ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, if in fact that residential use is eliminated, and there is no longer people residing in those two residential houses which are adjacent to the site, then in fact, this operator, based upon your testimony as to noise, could operate this plant manufacturing bitumen 24 hours a day?
Absolutely not.
Why not?
That was not my testimony at all. My testimony was with respect to the, the closest homes on Cranberry Road, based upon my modeling, the plant cannot operate from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Now, that house you're referring to is not a house that's owned by the applicant, would that be correct?
That, I do not believe the houses on Cranberry Road are owned by my applicant. The, the discussions that were had about the houses that were owned are the houses on Yellowbrook Road, and they, those are being resolved by a separate mechanism as far as abandonment as a residential use in the future.
So that, that's not the houses you were referring to, and if I'm mistaken, I apologize for that. Let's just talk a little bit then about the continued operation of the plant after 10:00 as far as the loading of trucks to take to various sites. Now, if the plant were not operating, but if in fact only trucks were loading and/or unloading material, that would be able to go on after 10:00 PM, would it not?
That's correct.
Now, with regard to the silos and crushing, my understanding in looking at the plans is that there can be two trucks which are located, or rather loaded, simultaneously.
If, I mean, he's not...
That's an operational question.
Goes to noise.
No.
No, it's operational.
Goes to noise and a number of trucks that are coming out to the site.
Mr. Gazarovski, all due respect, the, the sound expert does not know how many trucks can be loaded at once. He, he doesn't. He, he doesn't. He goes on a basis of sound, you know, what, what's it emitting? I, I don't, I, I would ask that to an operational question.
Okay, fine. Let's, let's talk about then that the, the operation and the trucks that are on the site prior to 10:00 PM, okay? That's what we're talking about.
Prior to 10:00 PM.
Right. In that, in that situation, you're able to operate so long as you do not exceed 65 dBAs?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, and we know now that there can be no manufacturing, as I understand it, of material after TPM, correct?
10:00 PM?
10:00 PM, that's what I thought you said, correct?
That's correct, from a noise perspective.
Okay. Now, is the applicant still entitled to bring, rather, to bring trucks onto the site to load bitumen and take it off of the site, so there will be truck traffic on the roads?
That's what the testimony was.
Is the truck, is the advocate able to bring trucks onto the site to dump various materials such as rap or fuel in the land? Can he do that?
I'm gonna object to this line of questioning, because once again, going into an operational question.
Well, if you're telling me that you can't, if you're telling me...
We're talking about noise, from a noise perspective, it's already been, been testified to that the plant, that the property can operate after 10 o'clock.
If they're telling me that the only activity will take...
Just one at a time.
Because it's with, it's within, it's within the code, the proper noise levels, if it's operating with, as long as the manufacturing is not happening, the plant can still operate after 10:00 PM. That's been, that's already been testified to.
Look, I, I agreed with that comment, however, the next question is, if all other noises continue on, such as crushing, such as bringing trucks onto the site, all except for the operation of manufacturing the asphalt, will that exceed 50 dBAs? And if it ha, if it does, that's another question. If he doesn't, if he's never performed that exercise, all he's got to do is say, "I didn't do that exercise."
If we can qualify what exercise he's, he's talking about.
The exercise of determining what the noise going out to the receptors from that source, which would be the loading of trucks under the silos, the bringing of materials such as RAP, concrete and cement onto the site, the bringing of fuel onto the site, the operation of the front-end loaders and various trucks on the site, did you ever do that?
And I think that, that's been answered, that was part of Mr. Krosen's testimony, is that it can operate after 10, 10 o'clock and be within the bounds of the law.
I want to know if he's testifying that she can operate after 10 o'clock without exceeding the 50 dBAs, I want to know what sources he took into consideration in making that determination.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and could you rephrase the question, please?
Re-ask the question, please.
I mean, you, you made a long statement, and I just want to be sure I'm answering the right question.
I'll speak slower, and you can correct me when I'm wrong or misspeaking. My understanding of, when you gave testimony that the dBAs would not exceed 50 after 10 o'clock, that that would because you would eliminate the manufacturing process with the asphalt going into the rollers and going up the conveyor and into the silos. But my question is, did you take into consideration, when you opined as to that, the bringing of additional trucks onto the site to drop off raw material, the bringing of fuel trucks onto the site, the loading of the various container areas where you would dump the rock, the sand, the concrete, whatever it may be, that you would utilize in the manufacturing process? Did you factor those things in?
Yes, I did. If you will recall, the, one of the key components of the nighttime operations is to shut down the main entrance that is opposite Cranberry Road and force all the trucks to use the northerly driveway that is at the north end of the property. And that driveway is protected by the berm and a wall that's installed there that we had testified to, so trucks entering and leaving there can do so without violating the, the 50 dBA limit, and then they can go to the interior of the site and, and, and trucks that, because you previously mentioned dumping concrete and stuff, but my, it's my understanding that that's not part of this application, that the only incoming material would be the, the potential for the millings that would come in from a road where asphalt is being delivered to, and those millings could come in that driveway and go to the rear of the property and dump, and I accounted for that in my modeling.
Would that, would that milling, did you take noise readings as to that milling, or was it a part of what Aztec gave you?
The aspect of milling is not a, a, a noise source that would be occurring on site, it's the truck operations that would be occurring on site.
How about the moving of various materials delivered to the various storage bins?
What materials are you referring to?
Well, rap, for example, or sand, other items which are shown on the plan for storing a material to be taken into the process of manufacturing the asphalt.
I accounted for numerous trucks operating on site at various locations and performing their operations.
That was it?
Well, that's all that's occurring on site.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that is it.
Let's, let's move on a little bit.
Thank you.
Now, my understanding of whether it's noise or traffic or whatever it may be, your report has to be based or predicated upon what the build-out is of the facility in question, correct? In other words, when you're doing a noise study, you're not just simply looking at one hour, you're looking at the totality of the operation.
I'm not sure what that question means.
Okay.
Obviously, we have to look at the entire operation. I mean, obviously, we have to look at the entire operation.
Let's, let me try to, let me try to refine that question a little bit. With regard to noise, for example, you just don't look at a one-hour period, or rather you look at the totality of the operation over a 24-hour period.
We look at the worst-case time periods. The noise code is not based upon an LDN, it's not based upon a 24-hour average or anything like that. It's based upon instantaneous noise levels that occur either in the daytime or in the nighttime. So we are looking at worst-case conditions in those two time periods.
But there's a difference, is there not, between instantaneous noise and measuring continual noise or continuous noise? Those are two different standards.
Oh, sorry, I stand corrected. I should have said continuous noise. But continuous noise, as far as the state is concerned and the Howell Township ordinance is concerned, can be periods as short as a second or two.
Let me just, if I can, follow up on that just a little bit, and I, and I, and I don't want to slough off into someone's area of expertise, but as a noise consultant, would you agree with me that with regard to noise, and based upon the volume that this plant can produce, that the noise may remain constant throughout the day? If you can't answer the question, I understand that.
No, I doubt that it will remain constant throughout the day because production will change throughout the day, the number of trucks on-site will change throughout the day, so the noise will be highly variable.
Would you agree with me that the degree of noise, that the noise created is really predicated upon the amount of tonnage that can be produced at a site on a daily basis?
That's a question that I think has already been asked and already answered, and the noise, as has been testified to, doesn't matter if it's, if it's, it's not based on tonnage, it's based on what's noise produced from a noise source.
Tonnage--
And as Mr. Crossen said, a noise source is a noise source.
Tonnage equates to operation, the hours of operation--
And once again, we went through hours of operations.
That's an operational question, I think.
Let's go. How about with regard to the route that these trucks would take to get to Route 33? Did you give any consideration to that?
I was concerned about noise as far as what is being emitted on-site. Once the trucks are 100% on the public roadway, they are not subject to compliance with the noise code, but I believe that I recall the testimony from the client that the trucks will not be going on Cranberry Road, and the intent is to focus them toward Route 33.
Now, I understand that in measuring noise, you measure it at its source, and you don't measure the sound of a truck when it's on a public roadway, but that noise is still there, is it not?
That is correct.
Right, now, are you aware of the fact, you know what the distance is between the ingress and egress of this property to the entranceway to Route 33?
I think that's a traffic question.
I mean, if you, if you know the answer--
A mile, plus or minus?
Okay, are you aware of the fact that in that distance, the trucks in question will have to pass through areas of Yellowbrook Road which has residential houses on both sides?
If you say so.
Okay, now, are you also acknowledging that in addition to measuring noise from a site, there is also something which would be known as nuisance noise in a neighborhood, is there not?
That's a very broad term. I'm not sure how you're using that.
In other words, you're saying the word nuisance is a broad term?
That's correct.
Okay. In your expertise as a noise expert, do you think that nuisance noise could or should be taken into consideration when evaluating a site?
Again, I don't know how you're using the term nuisance noise.
Well, noise is any type of unwarranted or of sound, in other words, it's an annoyance, is it not? Noise is an annoyance, depending upon the volume.
I don't know what standard Mr. Gazarovski is talking about, or where he's going to. Is he creating a new standard? As far as I, as far as I understand, there's a noise code in that, that's the township of Howell has a noise code, the state of Jersey has a noise code. I don't know about this new noise code--
This is not a new theory. Mr. Crossen, when one is evaluating noise, there's different charts which you use as well, are there not, as to what noise comes from a motorcycle, what noise comes from an airliner, what noise comes from a host of other things? Does it not?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with that chart, aren't you?
Well, there's more than one chart. I mean, there's lots of documents.
Okay. Now, on that chart, is there anything giving you the noise standards, or any chart that you know of that gives you the noise standards for noise coming from an asphalt plant?
And once again, this has been asked and answered, I think, and I'm not really quite sure, once again, where Mr. Gazarovski is going with his line of questioning. He was asking about some random chart that he didn't qualify as to what the chart is. I mean, this testimony provided by the, by the, Mr. Crossen is that the noise on the site is meets the code, meets the state code, meets the township code. He's questioned Mr. Crossen about where he, how he modeled those numbers, how he camped with those numbers. You know, I'm not quite sure where Mr. Gazarovski is going with his question.
I want to know, let me ask you this question. Let me ask you this. You know, we're sitting here and we're using the term DBAs or 50 DBAs. What would you say is a noise, in Laban's language, comparable to 65 DBAs?
And that's, that's difficult because a lot of noises are varying. You could sit out next to Yellowbrook Road and hear 65, and then 10 seconds later, it's 55.
I understand that. But my question is, the state, as well as the locality, municipal locality, utilizes a certain standard, saying between certain hours it could be 65 DBAs, between other hours it can be 50 DBAs.
Correct.
So we have no testing from this particular plant which is proposed to come in. So can you give me an example of what you believe 65 DBAs would be from a comparable noise?
It really wouldn't have any meaning in the, in the context that we're talking about. I mean, I believe I had a chart in my report, but again, those, those things are variable.
Will you point me to the chart, please?
Mr. Chair, if I could just interject. Mr. Crossen, can you give us an example of what would be 65 DBAs? Is a vacuum cleaner 65 DBAs? Is a blow dryer 65 DBAs? Just answer the direct question, and we can move on. It's not a complicated question. What standard appliance you have in a house that would be 65 DBAs? It's a very simple question, and we've heard expert testimony here in the past that could answer that question. So if you could just answer it, we could move on.
Okay, well, certainly it depends on the distance you are from the vacuum cleaner, but a vacuum cleaner is certainly capable of generating 65 decibels inside the house.
Thank you.
There you go.
At what distance? Just, at what distance?
Four feet, maybe, I'm guessing.
And then it slacks off after that distance?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't hear his response, so.
Okay, his response was a vacuum cleaner. Okay, that vacuum cleaner at four feet could produce 65 dB.
Okay.
As the further you get away, the less DBA it's going to be.
Now, simply put, if you were sitting in a room and you were four feet away from a vacuum cleaner, and it was putting out 65 DBAs, would you find that annoying?
It depends whether I'm vacuuming or trying to talk.
Good answer.
What if you were trying to sleep? What if you're trying to sleep and there were 65 DBAs four feet away from you?
I suppose that would be annoying.
Okay. Now, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development puts out literature, does it not, dealing with noise and effects that it has upon people?
Absolutely.
And I'm absolutely positive that as an expert, you have reviewed some of those documents, have you not?
I have.
I know you have. Let me show you, and have this marked if I may as O2. I have copies for the board.
Tell Mr. Butler.
I'm sorry.
Do you have an O1, Mr. Gazarovski?
I thought we had, I thought, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I started with O1, but I guess--
Mark it O1.
I look.
This will be O1.
Want to call this O1?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And actually, I have some questions, because I don't know what this document is.
Okay, we'll qualify it real quick.
If we can qualify what this document is before entering it into the record.
It's a document which is extracted from a literature put out by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Community Planning and Development, Sound Transmission Class Guidance, that's where it comes from.
Okay, what, what year is that?
What year is it? I don't see a year on it.
Looks like 1972.
1972.
Yeah.
Okay.
You think noise changes in 30 years, 40 years?
Well, you were asking a bunch of questions about when he tested in 1990, and questioning whether that was valid or not.
That was a question, testing readings he took.
But what, so my question, so this is from some handbook in 1972? Is that, that's where it's from?
That's what, that's when it was published, unless it was updated since then, that's what it is.
Okay. And what does the United States HUD have to do with the regulations of the state of New Jersey and Howell Township?
Well, it has to do with guidance, which is given to both states and localities as to noise. That's what it has to do with, and also support of the housing of urban development.
And Mr. Gazarovski, when, when the state of New Jersey and Howell Township formulated their noise code, do you know if they based their findings and their ordinances on this 1972 study?
If you're going to ask me a question, let's put it on the record.
I did.
Howell Township ordinance with regard to noise is modeled after the state code with regard to noise. And you know, there may be different publications, but frankly speaking, noise is noise. If one publication says that the noise emanating from a car horn is 65 DBAs, that's what it says. If your witness disagrees with that, you could say, "I disagree."
Mr. Gazarovski, before we get bogged down again on this issue, let's identify O1, ask your question of Mr. Crossen, and see if you're familiar with the exhibit.
That's it.
Okay, let me just, let me identify the exhibit that I'm referring to. It's page one of chapter one of Noise Notebook, known as Sound Transmission Class Guidance.
Mr. Gazarovski, I've got a question for you. Are you going to have a witness that's going to be able to testify to this document?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm certainly am.
Okay.
Is that going to happen tonight, before he asks the question?
I didn't realize Mr. Butler had a sense of humor.
Well, I would like to hear testimony on the document before, you know, his, because his professional is probably, he's read probably hundreds of documents.
Well, let me ask him if he's ever read this one.
Okay. You can ask, but I don't know if he'll have the answers.
Okay, let me, let me, Mr. Crossen, you know, respectfully, and I understand your involvement in studying noise, and I'm assuming that I know that you've written various articles and treatises and the like. Now, before we get into this, would you agree with me that the concern over noise has to do with sometimes the psychological health of people, does it not?
That is true.
It sometimes has to do with people who are exposed to loud noise suffering from sleep deprivation, so what we're trying to do today is--
Mr. Gazarovski, I'm just going to stop you there. He's a noise expert.
Right.
He's not a medical doctor, he's not a medical expert. He's testifying in a very narrow scope as to what it is that he was retained to do, and that's beyond the scope of, respectfully, of what it is.
I could ask him, I could ask him, I believe, whether or not the concerns for these regulations is to protect the health and well-being of the public, can I?
What, what regulations is he talking about?
Well, how about your noise code in Howell Township? Why do you think, why do you think they have a limit of 65 DBAs and it's not 95 DBAs?
The 65 DBAs is based upon speech communication, and that's the daytime standard, and the nighttime standard is based upon sleep.
I understand that. Looking at this exhibit, which we have marked, have you ever seen this chart before?
I have.
You have?
Absolutely.
Of course. Now, so you're familiar with the chart, and you're looking at it, do you have questions or do you object to the figures which they present on that chart?
I've never really studied it from that point of view because it's irrelevant to the situation as far as compliance with the noise codes. All of HUD's evaluation is based upon LDN, a 24-hour LEQ where there is a 10 dB penalty during the nighttime hours. And the noise code is much more restrictive than that because it's based upon continuous noise levels, so that the maximum of any two seconds of noise during the nighttime cannot exceed 50 decibels, whereas with the HUD, this is based upon a 24-hour average, so that there can be a variety of peaks that occur within that 24-hour period that don't then exceed HUD standards, whereas they would create an exceedance for, with respect to the state and the Howell Township noise.
Are you saying, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying the state and the local standards are higher than those of HUD, or the opposite?
I'm saying the state and local are more restrictive.
Right, meaning that, meaning that they are more restrictive in what sense? As far as determining what's impulsive sound and what is continuous sound?
I'm not talking about impulsive sound. There are certain limits for impulsive sound that we have not testified about because none of the noise sources are--
None of the noise sources are impulsive.
Are impulsive. But the continuous noise levels, the language says continuous, but as, as it's interpreted and implemented, continuous can be a two or a three-second increment. So in that two or three-second increment, they cannot exceed 50 decibels at night, and that's what my modeling demonstrated. Whereas if you use a 24-hour LEQ, there is no limitation that that would affect.
Let's look at the, let's look at the equipment which is on this site, for example.
And the HUD does not address equipment. It just, it addresses highway, rail and airplanes. It does not address industrial sources.
Well, for exa, well, before I get into that, with regard to the site, and I recognize that there's a distinction between impulsive noise and continual noise, and bear with me for one second, I think, for example, impulsive noise might be when every minute or so you might drop a weight to drive a pile. That would be impulsive noise, would it not?
Correct. Depending upon the style of pile driving you're doing.
I understand.
Pile driving could be an impulsive noise.
Okay, now, with regard to continual-- Okay, now, with regard to continual noise, what is, what is the number of seconds which takes you going from impulsive to continual?
Impulsive noise is less than a second, whereas continuous is more than a second.
Okay, so on this particular site, the conveyor belt taking the batubenes up to the silo, that would be continuous noise, would it not?
That is correct.
And once again...
Mr. Gazarovski, this has already been testified to.
Yeah, I mean, we're going back over the same, same questions over and over again.
This is all the things that he's putting together to create this noise.
But the testimony...
Sir, he's already put the testimony on the record. You know, you've already asked this question.
Did you, did you take into consideration the payloaders moving...
Once again, he asked, he asked this question.
It's been answered.
Okay, let's look at the chart here now. I don't, I don't agree with, but that's fine. You're saying that a noisy factory, would you, would you consider it as application to be for a factory of some sort?
And I'm going to, I'm going to object to this entire line of questioning. I mean, the testimony is what the testimony, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I understand, but he did not testify to this document.
That's why it's cross-examination.
Sir, yeah, but it wasn't part of his testimony. If you put your witness and testified to this testimony, then Mr. Butler can cross-examine your witness on this document. Based on his models and everything, it wasn't based on this documentation.
I can, let me, let me ask this question, and Mr. Butler objects, the board can rule. Mr. Crosson, on this document, it says that the DBAs for a noisy factory is 85 DBAs. Do you agree or disagree?
Once again, I'm going to, I'm going to object to that questioning. That's not, that's not what we're here for.
Yes, it is.
No, it's, it's not.
No, sir, it's not.
Well, then I would ask Mr. Chairman respectfully, that you seek an opinion from your lawyer.
Okay, Mr. Tropke.
I'd like to ask Mr. Crosson, did you, in any way in preparing for this hearing, in preparing your report, were you aware of this document, or did you even acknowledge it in any way?
I, I am aware of this document. I have looked at it years ago, and I did not use it in the preparation, but perhaps I can short-circuit and, and just indicate that noisy factory is a very general term, but I did, in my reports, show that 84 decibels at 50 feet is what the plant was projected to. You know, that is a factual point of reference that was in my report, so I can say that 84 decibels at 50 feet is what we modeled from the plant. And maybe that will make Mr. Gazarovski happier.
And then my other, my other question would be, is, they give decibel levels in this document, they give these levels here, but how many feet is that away from this factory? You know, where are the, are these right next, is this four feet? We have no basis of testimony on that.
Right, and I think what's important is that this wasn't consulted during, during Mr. Crosson's preparation.
Because I remember reading his documentation in his model. He said the plant is going to produce, you know, 84, maybe even a little higher, right, if you're standing right next to the plant, but as the further part, the way you get away, he stated at the street, it's going to be an acceptable level.
I understand that, I understand that.
So...
No, but not, let me just say this one way...
I want to move, move forward, please.
The probative value of this document in answering Mr. Gazarovski's question is severely limited, and as Mr. Gazarovski says, perhaps one more question and that's it on this document.
Accepting for the sake of argument that, we accept that the DBAs shown on this document are correct, then I would request that Mr. Crosson produce for us to review the material which he utilized to put into his computer model and what came out rather than just his testimony.
What's, he, he did that. That's, that's, that's what's in his report, the Aztec, not what he used.
The documentation that he relied upon is not...
He's asked that, Mr. Gazarovski has asked that question twelve times.
Okay, at this time, the board's going to take a five-minute break here, if you don't mind, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something before we actually take a break.
Okay.
I seem to find that a lot of testimony is under assumption and speculation. I'm just hearing too much of it, and it's not fact, it's guesswork. Are we talking about the noise level strictly on the 35 acres of LNL, or when the shooting range up the road is shooting, or the asphalt, not the asphalt, the concrete trucks are being loaded, which makes noise right across the street? We're not, that doesn't include that, right? It's just strictly LNL.
It's strictly LNL paving at the street and at...
At the street.
The abiaits and, and beyond.
So it would include other noises?
Yes, it would.
Okay. This particular thing, 46-years-old, I don't agree on using it. It's got to be something newer.
Well...
No, as I've said, Mr. O'Donnell, the probative value of that document is limited to cross-examinations, asked a couple of questions, this is not dispositive of anything, and you can give it whatever weight you wish to, up or down.
I don't give it any weight.
Your call. And before you take a break, Mr. Gazarovski, are you finishing up, or you finished, or will you resume after the break with this witness?
Yes.
You are resuming?
Yes.
Very good.
Board to reconvene at 9:05. Okay, Mr. Gazarovski.
And I'm going to be, I'm going to be brief, so we will go on.
Can I make a suggestion? Just a suggestion. Can we limit the questions to his testimony? You know, his reports, his testimony, not, let's, don't go down any rabbit holes here.
I'm not, nothing. Let's, let's see how it goes on there. Mr. Crosson, when was the last time that you were at this site?
I'd have to look, it was several weeks ago.
Pardon?
Several weeks ago.
Okay.
Do you want an exact date?
If you have it readily available.
October 26th.
Okay. Now, my understanding is, is that your testimony as to noise is limited solely to the projected use of this being an asphalt plant, correct?
That's correct.
Now, are you aware of the fact that at the present time, on this site, there are signs which say there will be additional uses on that site? Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Would the existence or the proposed use of additional uses on this site affect your, possibly affect your testimony as to the noise being generated?
No, my testimony is with respect to this application, not with respect to any future other activities of which I'm not aware.
Okay, that's fine, I appreciate that. With regard to truck traffic, my understanding with regard to noise is that if, for example, at 10 feet away, a truck starting up is at whatever the DBs are, 65, 75, 85, they're measured by a noise meter, correct?
That's correct.
Now, if there's a companion truck which is located right alongside that truck, which is also giving off DBAs at the same volume, would that increase the reading on the noise meter?
Depending upon the location of it with respect to the noise meter, yes.
I understand that. But if, in a case scenario where both trucks are side by side, noise meter is the exact distance away from both of them, there would be an increase in the DBA reading, would there not be?
Yes.
And how much would that be if hypothetically everything was exact?
If, if they were superimposed onto one another, which is physically impossible...
Side by side?
Well, at side by side, you would have to get far enough away that they would be considered a point source, so if you were perhaps maybe 100 feet away or 200 feet away, it would increase by 3 decibels.
So if the one reading would be at 65, the second, presence of the second truck would take it from 65 to 68?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if you were to hypothetically multiply that out by there being 20 trucks on the site, as I understand it, that would be dependent upon the varying distances that those trucks are from, let's say, the first source or the original truck.
Right.
But it would increase the DBAs, would it not?
That's correct.
So, to a certain extent, when you did your modeling, how many trucks did you place on the site, or give credit on the site for, when you did your modeling?
My recollection is that I had six trucks operating simultaneously.
Okay. Now, you recognize that the testimony from the applicant was, is that there could be as many, and I could stand corrected, as 20 trucks on the site at the same time?
If, if, if Mr. Crosson knows the, or remembers that...
If he knows or he doesn't know, then he could just tell me.
I don't remember the exact number, but I do remember testifying to the fact that, that if trucks were on-site queuing up, waiting for asphalt, that they would be turning their engines off.
They would what?
Be turning their engines off.
Well, they'd be starting up again, wouldn't they? And that would be an even higher sign, wouldn't it? Having said all of that, you did your modeling upon six trucks?
That's correct.
Okay. I just have a couple more questions. When you did your modeling, did you take into consideration the sounds of front-end loaders scraping material off of the surface to pick it up and deliver? Did you do that?
The modeling that we're talking about for the compliance of the nighttime, I did not, because that, my understanding is that is not an activity that would be occurring during the night.
How about the bringing in of materials onto the site from offsite onto the site? Did you take that into consideration?
I took into account bringing in millings during the asphalt operations at night.
Let me just see these things. I'll be, just one or two last questions. I just might have other, my other folders like this. I have a question. Now, just, perhaps one last question. With regard to the millings brought onto the site, and you can answer this question if you can, if you can't find it yet. Are you aware of how those millings are dumped out of a truck? Are they with a loader that just simply lifts up the truck bed and dumps the millings out?
That's my general understanding.
Is it also your general understanding that as they are dumped out, there often at times is a clanging sound as the rear of the truck bangs against the body of the truck? If you know, if you don't know, fine again.
I don't know specifically.
What?
I don't know specifically.
That's fine, thank you, I have a few more questions.
Mr. Butler, do you have any redirect of any kind?
I will be ridiculously quick.
Okay.
I'll hold you to it.
And I promise, Mr. Crosson, you were asked an hour and a half worth of questions. Your testimony and your report find that the property, when operating during the day, will meet the New Jersey and the Howell Township noise codes.
That's correct.
Your testimony is that when operating at night, they will also meet the Howell Township and the state of New Jersey noise codes.
That's correct.
And you said that all of your calculations and your modeling did not take into effect any of the additional landscaping, birmingham, or structures that are on the property.
That is with respect to the plant calculations, yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Okay.
Just one last question. Are we going to receive from Aztec the basis of the information which you emailed to this witness?
Like any type of spec you would get for someone with modeling an air conditioning system or modeling a refrigerator unit, you get numbers that are based on, on how the, how that, how that thing is going to operate, be it a recycling or air conditioning unit, that's what was provided by Aztec.
Nothing is on identifying land, bank, or any other source.
This is the information that's provided from the manufacturer, be it, just like a manufacturer of an air conditioning unit, like a train. It's provided, this is, these are the specifications for this.
I think the answer is no. I think the board will rely upon whatever the evidence was that was presented by the applicant and give it again whatever weight the board believes it should be giving. And with that, I think we're concluded with this witness, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we are. One, who, what's your next witness you wanted to cross?
Mr. Dean?
Mr. Dean, okay.
Just for the board, Mr. Dean was a traffic expert. He provided testimony a few, two, two meetings ago, I think, at this time.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
And you were previously sworn, and you were, you're still under oath.
So I understand, yes.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Dean, just talk loudly, so our voices are picked up.
That, that microphone right there.
Good evening, Mr. Dean. Are you present throughout the testimony of Mr. Crosson?
I'm not sure.
Were you here for the last 15 minutes?
Yes, except for the past five. I was outside, I was outside after the break.
Okay, did you recall in listening to his testimony, my asking him the question of whether or not he was aware of the fact that there were other proposed uses on this site?
I, I'm not sure how that pertains to traffic engineering, so forgive me.
Well, my question is, were you aware of the fact that there is other proposed uses on the site? If you're not aware of that, fine. If you are aware of it, you say yes.
I'm going to object, I mean, the application was the, is what the application is, the uses that are proposed are what has been testified to.
Yes, sir. I have to agree with Mr. Butler.
Any other exhibit they mark, Mr. Chairman? Wouldn't it just be O2, O3?
Whatever you have, it will be O2.
Pardon?
Your next marking is O2.
O2, then.
Yeah.
Does he have a microphone?
O2? Yeah, O2.
Mr. Dean, let me show you an exhibit which has been marked as O2, and I would represent to you...
Could we describe that first?
Mr. Chairman, I will...
If we could mark it and ask the foundational question first, if you would, after it's marked, please. Yeah.
We put them over there under the light to see if it gets a little dark over here, don't we?
Yeah.
Just a bit.
I would bring it up further, so the board can see it, over there, under that light.
Bring it up there.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yep.
Towards us a little, thank you. Do you want to qualify that?
Let me represent to the board that this was a photograph taken by my expert. The board wishes we could call him for the limited purposes of identifying and authenticating this photograph. I'll do that now, if you like, Mr. Thomas.
Well, I'd like to have a foundation. If this, if this witness can identify that, then you're going to have to present a quick witness to indicate, just for the purposes of establishing a foundation.
That's what I'm proposing to do. I'm going to call Mr. Thomas.
And I don't believe...
I don't think he's been sworn.
Right, I'm just, again, for the limited purposes of identification, I'll swear you make so.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm going to put my objection on the record, I'm not sure what any of this has to do with traffic testimony. I mean, the application is, once again, it's what the application is. We provide a testimony as to the operation, the proposed operation of the, of the property. What this sign has to do with the proposed operation of the property, I'm not entirely sure, nor how that relates to Mr. Dean's prior testimony concerning the traffic.
I'm going to, before Mr. Gazarovski speaks, we don't even know where he's going with that, so I think he should be entitled to at least wear this witness in, put a foundation... So, I think he should be entitled to at least wear this witness in, put a foundation on. And if there's gonna be an objection as to relevancy, we'll deal with it then. But let's move on with swearing in the witness.
Yes.
Briefly identify that for the record, and first of all, we'll swear you in. You swear the testimony you give this evening, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, have you got? Yes, I do. And your name, please. Uh, Andrew Thomas. Right. Mr. Gazarovski, for the limited purposes of IDing O2.
Mr. Thomas, you've been retained as my, uh, uh, expert in the field of planning in this matter, have you not?
Yes.
And I'll, and regarding to that, did you ever change-
I, I can't hear you. Mr. Gazarovski.
Did you ever change?
Is he, is he testifying as a planner right now?
It's on. You just have to speak right into the mic.
At this point in time, he's testifying as somebody who may have taken that photograph, and that, it's on, Ron, just put it-
It's on, it's on.
Yes, it's on.
So, just for the purposes of IDing, he's not testifying as a planner. If he took the picture, that's what we wanna know when he took it. Thank you.
See, now, as part of the preparation of your testimony, my request, did you visit the site?
Yes.
Did you make observations as to what your signs, which are presently on that site?
Yes, I did.
Did you take a photograph?
Took a photograph.
Is this in fact the photograph that you took?
Yes, it is.
This represents, uh, what the sign states, future home of, and it lists several corporations.
That's correct.
You took, you took the photograph. When did you take it?
I took it November 28th, which is actually, the, the date is on the bottom of the, uh, the photograph.
I have no further questions of this.
Okay, thank you. You may sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, O2 is identified. Um, you may proceed with your questions.
Okay, Mr. Dean, my only question is, uh, when you visited the site to do your studies, were you aware of the fact that the sign at that time, uh, was present on the property?
No, the sign that's on O2, the date was following my study and, and my appearance before this board. So, I, I, I don't know what the sign says or its content or its purpose.
So, whatever traffic, uh, those uses could or would generate, they are not a part of your review of this project?
My, my review of this project is the application that's before the board, not, not, I don't know what the sign says, so I don't know how it's related.
Okay, fine. Uh, if in fact those uses generated additional traffic, would that be irrelevant?
I, I don't know what those uses are, so I have no opinion.
I accept that. Now, let's go into, uh, your testimony, uh, relatively, uh, focusing on certain aspects of your testimony. Now, as I listened to and read your testimony, it appeared to me that your testimony with regard to traffic on this site was kind of like a snapshot, uh, perhaps, uh, one hour in perhaps limited, limited to the testimony given by Mr. Riddelly with regard to the product that was to be manufactured and the product that was to be sold over the period of one year, correct?
I, I have no idea what that question means.
Okay. Uh, when determining the proposed, or determining what you believe to be the, uh, traffic being generated to this site, what figure did you use with regard to the, uh, annual production of a manufactured product on this site?
I, I don't believe we evaluated annual production. I, I believe we relied on the applicant's testimony as to his business needs and the number of trucks generated on a daily basis.
Okay, now, uh, am I correct in saying then that your figures were predicated upon the testimony of the applicant producing approximately 200 tons of asphalt per year?
I, I don't, again, I don't recall the annual number, so I-
Well, was it the annual number? Wouldn't the annual number be important for you to determine how many trucks should be coming onto the site?
No, I think the daily number, and then of course the peak hourly number, which is what is typically the focus of a traffic study, is the most relevant from, from my perspective.
Let's, let's try to, if I can, just focus on what we're talking about. Is it your understanding that with regard to this site, it's the applicant's intention to start off by producing approximately 50 tons of asphalt per year for his use?
I, I think this has been, once again, it's, it's the same question. It's an ask and answer. Uh, Mr.-
That is the answer.
Mr. Dean told the board and just answered Mr. Gazarovski's question about how he came up with the numbers and came up with his report.
Okay, let, let's, let me rephrase the question.
I don't wanna get bogged down at nine twenty. I don't wanna get bogged down in the same question over and over again.
Let me rephrase the question. Was your report predicated upon the applicant producing 200 tons of asphalt per year?
I, I'll say no.
Pardon me?
I'll say no.
Okay. What was your number based upon his producing per year?
I don't know because I didn't use that in my study.
You didn't use any amount of product being produced, manufactured at all in your study?
I, I, I assumed that the subject application was an asphalt manufacturing plant that had the capability, or by the applicant's estimates, a certain number of trucks per day during the season. There, there are obviously other times of the year, as we look at annualized data, when the site generates zero traffic.
The question is, well, a, as a traffic expert, don't you have to give to the board what you deem to be the worst-case scenario for the traffic being generated?
And, and that is what I did, yes.
Okay. Let's go to the example that you utilized with regard to, uh, the office building. Now, did you make a determination prior to utilizing that as an example, uh, whether or not there was in fact a demand for office space in how?
The zoning-
That's, that's irrelevant. I wouldn't, I would ask that question.
What was the number you picked for the amount of square footage of office space?
I, I don't recall. I'm sure you have that in the transcript.
You have your report before you, don't you?
No, I don't.
You didn't bring your report with you?
I have it with me, yes.
Well, why don't you get it? We'll go through it.
I, it wasn't in a report. It was an exhibit that was prepared to the board of three uses that could fit on the site under the zone plan.
Okay, now, let's, let's pick the first exhibit then. That had to do with an office building, did it not?
It did.
And you gave to the board the total square footage of that office building, which was, I believe, approximately a little over 500,000 square feet, correct?
I think it was a little over 600,000 square feet, as memory serves.
A little over 600,000 square feet. And that was the complete build-out and the complete utilization of 600,000 square feet? Uh, and you predicated your traffic counts upon that, correct?
I, I, I performed a traffic calculation based on a hypothetical alternate use of the property as permitted under the zone.
I understand that. Well, you say as permitted. This particular use is not permitted on this site, is it?
That's why I made the comparison.
Well, we used the word as permitted. Let's go back. You have an office building. You say it's approximately 600,000 square feet. That would be for a full build-out and a full rent-out, correct?
No, I, I didn't evaluate full build-out. I, I developed a feasible, a feasible alternate land use plan. I, I didn't look at maximizing the utility of the site.
Well, did you use the figure 600,000 square feet?
I, I did, yes.
And did you then come up with, uh, an estimate as to the in-and-out traffic for the estimated trips, uh, on a daily basis?
I did.
Well, what square footage did you utilize to come up with that figure?
I think we just covered that. You just said 600,000. Did I mistake that? Did I misunderstand that? No, that, that was the question that was asked.
Well, I, I understand that you did a study, you came up with a hypothetical, and you utilized a use that was permitted in the zone, which is an office building, correct?
We've covered that, yes.
Yes, we've covered that.
Now, uh, you then based that figure as to how many cars that office building at 600,000 square feet would generate.
We covered that as well, yes.
Didn't you do that?
He said yes.
The answer is yes.
Sorry, he answered.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay, now, how about with regard to this site? Did you take into consideration the fact that this plant was capable of producing 1.2 million?
Once again, that's not, that's not, that's-
It's an operation.
And, and the question has been answered, how he figured out, how he made his determination. Mr. Gazarovski is asking the same question over and over again.
Yes, let's, let's move forward with the traffic.
Pardon me?
Let's, let's stay with his testimony as far as traffic.
His testimony was that he gave us a figure with regard to an office building, which is a permitted use of approximately 600,000 squares-
That's been answered.
And what that traffic would generate.
That's been answered.
Well, I wanna know why he would have utilized the maximum usage of an office building, but in performing a study for this asphalt plant, he didn't utilize the maximum production of the plant.
It's, it's apples and oranges. I mean-
No, it's not.
And he's, he's asked this question once again. He's been doing this now for 10 minutes. He's asked a question for it.
No, I know, look, I, I, look, let me see.
Okay, let, let's move forward on traffic.
This is right. I mean, look, I wonder if you come up with a traffic study of a facility such as an asphalt plant or a concrete plant, you have to determine first of all what that plant is capable of producing per year, per day, and then the number of trucks that will be in there picking up and leaving.
He already answered that question though, Mr. Gazarov- Yes, he did.
Okay, tell me how we answered it.
Well, no, 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 no.
No, do you wanna re-answer that question, please, for, for the fifth time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I based my traffic study on the testimony that was provided by the applicant as to the expected yield of this site.
Okay. Having said that, what was that figure?
I, I, I don't recall.
Well, was it 250,000, uh, tons?
Once again-
Mr. Chair, if I could maybe-
He said he didn't recall.
Maybe I could just cut through this?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Dean, if I could just ask you a direct question. So, your traffic analysis was based on the number of trucks the applicant presented in his operational testimony, correct? It had nothing to do with the amount of product in each truck, correct?
That, that is correct.
So, whether he produced two square feet or two cubic yards of material or a million cubic yards of material, your analysis was based on the amount of truck traffic testified by the applicant, correct?
Because as a traffic engineer, that's the relevant measure, yes.
I, I, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just asking yes or no. That's how you based your analysis, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, can we move forward, please?
Mr. Dean, accepting your figure, accepting your client's figure, if you have a facility that's capable of producing X-
Once again, it-
I mean, can I finish my question? Then he can object.
Because, no, because we're, we're back to talking about tonnage, and, and that, that's not what the testimony was. Miss, Miss Bean put it succinctly, just not even a minute ago.
Now-
You know, this is not-
Ask your question.
Thank you. Let him ask the question. Let him ask the question and let the chair rule. Go ahead, Mr. Gazarovski.
My, my question is that you're saying that your testimony was based upon the, uh, testimony of the applicant who said he would produce, I think he said in the first year of business, 50,000, uh, tons of concrete, and he hoped to get up to within a couple of years, I believe it was a total of 200,000 tons. Is that correct?
Okay, wait, wait, hold on a second. Can I, now I can put my objection on the record?
Yes, please.
First, I object to the relevancy. Second, I object to Mr. Gazarovski characterizing my client's testimony. Third, I object to the fact that this has already been asked, already been answered. We've now gone for another five minutes on the same question.
I, I agree, Mr. Butler. Mr. Gazarovski, that, that question, he already gave you the basis of, of his calculations on the traffic. Can we just move forward, please?
Let me ask this question then. Is all of your testimony predicated upon the assumption that this applicant will not produce more than 250 tons of asphalt?
Sir, that's already, let's-
Yeah, how, how much simpler can I get?
It's the same question.
Pardon me?
It's the same question in a different form.
No, it's not, Mr. Chairman.
Respectfully, it is, Mr. Gazarovski. I, at this point, I'm echoing the chairman, please.
Well, is that, is that his testimony, that all of his testimony?
He's testified as to what he based his study on.
No, it's not. That's not what his testimony was.
He based it on something, and he's testified to trucks and nothing more, and let's move on, please, respectfully.
Okay, tell me, and I'll ask this question one last time. Tell me the amount of production on a daily and yearly basis you predicated your testimony on.
Once again, you know-
It's the same objection.
I agree. It's the same objection. It, it's been answered. The, the question has been answered. He did not base his testimony on that. He based it on what the applicant stated that the business was gonna do. That, that was his answer.
That's it.
Three, that, that was his answer.
Is that your answer, Mr. Dean?
Four or five times.
Is that your answer?
For which question?
For which question? I, I thought the chairman said that you based your testimony based upon the testimony of Mr. Riddelly as to what he would be producing and selling.
No.
Is that, is that not so?
No.
No.
What am I missing here?
He, he said the applicant, would you please repeat for the fifth time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
What you based your calculations on, please?
My, my study was predicated on the applicant's estimate of the number of daily trucks that would be generated by the plant.
And are you, okay, now, are you aware of the amount of tons that could be carried in this plant?
Mr. Gazarovski, let's get, let's move-
Any, any questions dealing with tonnage, material, or anything else other than truck traffic, really can't go forward.
No.
And again-
He's an expert-
He's a traffic expert.
So, Mr. Chairman, you've now told Mr. Gazarovski that he cannot ask this question.
Yeah.
He has asked the question-
Let's move forward.
Seven, eight different times in eight different ways, where he says, I'm gonna ask one more question. I'm gonna ask it this way. All this is doing is delaying-
Yes, let's, let's move forward on traffic. Do you have any traffic questions dealing with Yellowbrook Road, dealing with the Delphi Road, dealing with Route 33? You know, Cranberry Road, any, that, that's what his testimony was based on, was traffic generation.
Hey, Mr. Dean, uh, I, I thought, perhaps I'm wrong, that in your report, you stated that access to the site and, uh, egress out of the site would be on three roads, two of them being Cranberry Road and Yellowbrook Road?
Um, that, that, that was the original traffic study that was subsequently amended when the applicant agreed that he would prohibit trucks from using Cranberry Road.
Okay. Now, as a traffic consultant, can you tell me how any applicant or pro, user can prevent trucks, outside trucks, from ingressing into the site off of Cranberry Road?
I'm gonna object to that question.
He can answer it. I think it's relevant.
It, it is.
I, I think an operator, as he works with regular vendors, can direct their trucks properly to the plant. I also think if there's a municipal ordinance enacted by the governing body, then there is enforcement of that agreement. However, that may affect other businesses. So, it's very difficult to single out one business who may be excluded or prohibited from using the road, while at the same time, other businesses and their trucks are allowed. But you've heard the applicant's representation, and that would be, I imagine, a potential condition that runs with any favorable action by the board and subject to enforcement.
Now, having said that, uh, the testimony then further goes is that all of this traffic, which is either accessing or egressing from the site, they would be utilizing Yellowbrook Road?
With that restriction in place, that's correct.
Okay, fine. Now-
What, truck traffic, not automobile traffic.
Not the majority of traffic coming to this site? Be truck traffic?
Uh, yes.
Okay, now, having said that, now, can you tell me what the distance is between from the driveway egressing the site to the, uh, entrance onto Route 33?
What do you mean, the entrance on? There is no site entrance on Route 33.
I didn't, access to Route 33.
You mean Yellowbrook Road and Route 33?
Yellowbrook Road from the point where they leave the plant to drive towards Route 33.
Yes.
What is that distance?
5,300 feet.
What, give it to me in miles.
5,300 feet. It's a little, a little by 20 feet over a mile, just about a mile.
Now, what it's doing then, is it also driving through residential zones and residential areas?
I, I don't know the zones.
Okay, fine. Now, with regard to that, that would mean that all of the traffic either coming to or leaving this site would be on Yellowbrook Road?
I believe I just answered that, yes.
Let's go back a little further. Now, can you answer this question? Would the amount of traffic traveling on Yellowbrook Road increase as a result of more product being manufactured and sold from this site?
If, 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 I mean, once again, you know, we're back to-
We're getting into the tonnage.
We're back to-
The traffic question.
Outside, outside of the, the report that Mr. Dean testified to, provided to this board.
I, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, there is no representation here by the applicant that he is going to limit the amount of product that he sells to whether it's 50 tons or 200 tons or 250 tons. He's building a plant that has the capacity of manufacturing over 1.2 million tons a year. There's gotta be a reason for that.
And I, I don't believe there's any testimony to this-
But I think that, that would be, as far, that would be a cross-reference to, to the operator or to, to the, the, the business owner, and based on his business model, I'm not gonna go into his testimony, but I, I think that was already testified to by, by, by the owner- by the owner what he, he was doing.
You're telling me that...
Not a traffic person.
If the owner is, the owner is representing, he's gonna manufacture two-hundred tons of asphalt a year, and he's creating a plant that's gonna produce, perhaps, has the capacity of one-point-two-million, that doesn't affect traffic.
Once again, that's not, that's...
Five times as much traffic.
Mr. Gazarovski is characterizing testimony that, I, I'm not even sure if it's correct or not, what, and that's outside of the scope of what Mr. Dean testified to and what was in Mr. Dean's report.
I have to agree.
Mr. Dean, uh, you've testified many times before many boards, have you not?
I have.
Doesn't all of your testimony with regard to traffic, uh, demand that you give us a figure based upon a build-out of the project?
It requires an evaluation of the application as it's presented. There's no speculation involved in the traffic study. It is reactive to an application that's submitted to a board.
So, if, for example, a, an application comes in, uh, for a subdivision or whatever it may be, for, uh, twenty-four lots, and the applicant says, "I'm only gonna build five houses," are you saying to me that your testimony, uh, expert testimony would only deal with those five houses?
No, because it was a twenty-four-lot subdivision. That's the approval that was sought.
Well, this is an approval for a fan, the manufacturing, one-point-two-million tons a year.
Once again, we're back, we're back, we're back again. He's doing the same thing. He's, he's trying to...
You're right, I am doing the same thing. And the reason why I'm doing it...
No, no, no.
Mr. Trump.
Mr. Chairman, this applicant is before this board for a use...
And, 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 and now he's gonna make a statement so that he can get his question.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think that Mr. Dean has answered the questions, uh, fully and amply. Mr. Gazarovski, I, I respect what you're doing, but I, again, I respectfully ask that you move on because really, he's indicated what the basis of his testimony was and his findings of the traffic study were based upon something other than what it is that you were, have been asking for the last five or so minutes.
All I would ask then is we have a definitive statement on the record, the tonnage that he predicated his testimony on.
This, this witness can't...
He has, he's indicated that his study was not based on tonnage, it was based on trucks, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I agree.
Respectfully, Mr. You know, trucks can only, I mean, trucks carry...
Objection is noted, Mr. Gazarovski.
It's noted.
Respectfully.
And for the, for the record, we've been doing this now for twenty-five minutes, and it's the same question.
You know, I, I'm, I'm really tired of, if, if, if the chairman wants to direct me or remonstrate me, that's fine. I, I don't need this continual interruption by Mr. Butler.
I will, I will, I will interrupt if I think that there's an objectionable question. That's my, that's my right.
Objection noted, Mr. Gazarovski. Let's move forward with traffic testimony.
Well, the traffic testimony is based upon the number of trucks.
Exactly, it's been answered.
Okay. Okay, if that's, if that's the testimony, that's what it is. Mr. Dean, uh, how many other asphalt plans and reports have you prepared studies for?
To the best of my recollection, uh, at least four, perhaps half a dozen.
Okay, can you give me the names of those, please?
Um, Stavola.
Okay.
I'm sure you're familiar with that name.
Yeah, when did you do that report?
That was done in a site in Hunterdon County in two thousand and seventeen.
What year?
I just said, please listen, two thousand and seventeen. I did a study for Pearson Asphalt at two of their locations. I did one for FLM in Titten Falls, you may recall that one as well, and I believe there was one more in, at least one more, in Pennsylvania in Bucks County, it must have been twenty years ago.
So, you, you have then complete familiarity with what tonnage a truck can carry?
Mr. Gazarovski, let's get off of the tonnage.
Can, can I, can...
It, it's...
I mean, I, you know, he's having, he's having, can I, can I...
Well, let's, let's not...
Mr. Gazarovski...
Mr. Mr. Butler, I, I understand you're frustrated, but please, just hold the comments down, let the chair make a ruling, and the ruling that I recall was that we're not talking about tonnage here anymore. So, if that's the case, I would say, move on and direct the, any objections you may have to the chair and not to Mr. Gazarovski.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dean, you testified in your, uh, oral testimony, uh, you said that from a traffic engineer's perspective, uh, when a land development application keeps traffic on the very low end of the spectrum, I think it has certain benefits in terms of minimizing its aspect on the road system. Uh, and I would have to estimate that the operation by L-N-L is at least comparable, if not less than, what previously occurred on the site with another manufacturing operation. That's what you testified to, correct?
I, I believe you're reading from perhaps a transcript, but that sounds like a reasonable verbatim.
Did you do, ever do any traffic studies with regard to that prior use on the site?
No, I also testified to that, that it closed before we were involved with the project.
Now, do you know how long that, that was closed before?
I do not.
You don't? Okay. I have no further questions.
I have no...
Any redirect?
No, no redirect.
Okay.
I do, I do have one further question. As, as I read your testimony...
Is it about tonnage?
You said that this estimate is based upon material produ, upon material projections by the applicant. Of those sixty daily trucks, fifty would be the shipping of manufactured material, and ten would be for the import of raw material. Now, is, was that your testimony?
I believe that's actually from my report. I don't, I don't even know if I testified to that, but...
So, your, your testimony, or your report is that on a daily basis, there'll be no more than sixty daily trucks leaving this site?
That, that sounds like what I wrote, yes.
Okay. And now, did you also take into consideration trucks coming onto the site to deliver materials?
It's, it's, trucks that come in, leave, so yes, import and export, they're, they're counted equally.
I'll, I'll read exactly what you said. Of these daily trucks, fifty would be shipping of manufactured material, and ten would be for import of raw material.
Correct.
So, you're saying that on a daily basis, approximately fifty trucks will load up and leave?
They come in empty, they arrive empty, and leave full. The other ten trucks arrive full and leave empty.
Okay. I don't, I wanna just cut through all of that, okay? Your testimony and your report, uh, is based upon there being on a, on a daily basis, fifty trucks being loaded with material and leaving the site.
Correct.
And with regard to bringing in, uh, raw material, that's based upon ten trucks coming onto the site and leaving the site clean and raw.
Yes.
And any deviation of that, any deviation of that would affect your expert's report, would it not?
No.
If, if the amount of trucks was increased tenfold, it would not?
I, I haven't evaluated it. The, the number of trucks could be halved, and it wouldn't affect my results, so I haven't studied a hypothetical.
Okay. So, your testimony is limited solely to this figure and the tonnage supplied by the applicant?
No tonnage.
We're back.
No tonnage.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I have one follow-up with that.
Oh, sorry, come on back.
I, I, I just wanna clarify this. You're bas, what, what you've been testifying to is solely based on the asphalt plant operation, correct? Not what existing operation is going on now?
Uh, no. And the reason is, we did take into consideration the existing operation because it was approved by, was it the planning board?
Planning board.
The planning board, and when we did our traffic counts, we captured that traffic as, as already being there. So, it's, it's additive to, to what is already occurring on the site.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Let's just get a clarification of that. So, it's sixty plus whatever the existing site is doing?
That's correct.
So, what's that number?
It's in the report. I, I don't recall.
I'm asking you the question from the report before. Do you know what the answer is?
It's in the report, yes, I do know what the answer is.
What's your tell me?
I, I don't have the report in front of me. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gazarovski. You're next.
Gary?
It seems, I'm just a dumb engineer. If I have ten trucks of loads coming in and I got fifty trucks going out, don't I run out of material somehow or other? How does that equate?
That, I don't know the answer to that. That, that's from the applicant, and, and again, it depends on the size of the trucks bringing in the material and their length versus the size of the trucks that are leaving with material, finished product, plus there's material that is stored on-site. So, there may be days where, for example, it rains and there's limited asphalt production, they still may be bringing material in, just not producing it.
So, it seems to me still that there's gonna be a lot of trucks bringing things in, whatever the, uh, material is, the aggregate or sand or whatever, and that still has to come close to what's going out. The size of the trucks are normally about the same.
Uh, I'm not sure...
And that's an assumption, like the assumption of twenty trucks or thirty trucks.
That's a fair question, and I, I've just seen bigger sand and gravel trucks. They're, they're longer, for example, I, I don't wanna call them tractor trailer length, but, but they're slightly shorter, but I, I can't speak to that with authority.
Mr. Modic.
No, and that's what I'm saying, the ones going out are, are shorter.
Mr. Modic, I, I just also wanna remind you that some of the trucks that are picking up material might only be picking up two tons.
Well, that makes a big difference on the truck load.
What I, what I'd stated was some of the trucks that will be picking up asphalt, they won't be picking up a full truckload. It, it could be a municipality needing two tons to fill a pothole. You know, they, it's variable what comes in and what goes out.
Yeah, but if we average this out, it's still, if, if the trucks going out are variable in size, and the trucks coming in are variable in size.
They're not.
They're always bigger coming in.
You bring twenty-five, you bring eighty-thousand-pound trucks in to make deliveries to make it efficient, and that's the way the vendor wants it, that's the way everybody wants it. So, you're gonna bring large trucks in, and it could go out in, in a roof rack and a stage wagon.
So, if they got a municipality putting in a new road, and there's a continual flow, uh, wouldn't that get closer to the number coming in equaling the number going out?
It, it could be, but it's based on averages. Am I correct?
Correct, and, and again, not every day is a production day. It's, it's largely weather-dependent, and it's season-dependent, so once we get into cold weather and freezing, there's stasis, so...
Yeah, well, that's a completely different...
Correct.
I'm saying, I'm saying in-season.
I, I think that's best left to the applicant, but, but...
The operator. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, one further question. Mr. Dean, I'm looking at your report, and you may not have it before you, but it's on page seven. You wanna get a copy of the file along with me, or...
I'll, I'll listen and, if I need to.
On page seven, in the first full paragraph, you say, "To a certain extent, the site operation, particularly the conveyance of finished material to trucks for shipping, has a finite capacity." Now, finite capacity means that there's a certain limitation as to what you can produce, does it not?
The way I wrote that was intended to mean it takes a certain amount of time to fill way and have a vehicle processed through the system. That is capacity limited. I, as, as you just motioned suggesting vertical and storage, I, I don't know of that.
But then you go on to say, "Due to the physical limitations of the silos and the processing equipment." Now, do you know how many silos this approval is going for?
I believe it's three.
Six, I believe. Three being constructed, three, but the approval is seeking the construction of six silos.
That's a, I, I...
That's operational, that's operational.
It's in his report, Mr. Chairman. It's in his report.
What's, okay, I didn't hear a total number of, of silos.
It was, that was in Mr. Kennedy's testimony.
Exactly, but that's not in his report.
It's in his report.
Six silos.
No, he says, "Will dictate the regular, due to the limitation of the silos." We know there are six silos.
Yeah, but he's not testifying in his report that there's six silos. I, I, I don't, I didn't hear the word six in there.
Well, Mr. Mr. Dean, did you read, did you read the application?
Uh, no, I didn't.
You never read the application?
No.
Did you read the notices?
No.
Did you look at the plans?
Yes.
Did you see the plans where they reflect six silos?
I don't recall that.
If, if the application plans say six silos, it's six silos, isn't it?
My, my report's based on the number of trucks, so...
Okay, then it says, and...
I can't reconcile that.
And it says, "And the processing equipment." Now, the processing equipment would be the manufacturing of the material, is it not?
No, it's loading the way, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Can I, can I, through the chair, may I place my objection on the record that, once again, we're going into the operational. Mr. Dean testified as to how his, his calculations were, were reached.
It's in his report, Mr. Chairman.
His method.
Yeah, but I, I didn't hear a, a quantity of silos. I, I know, he, he's talking about the, the limitation, there's limitations on anything.
The Aztec representative testified...
Exactly, Aztec's representative testified on that, not the traffic expert.
He's basing his report on that.
Did you base your report on the Aztec representative's testimony?
I did not, no.
Okay.
What did you base it on then?
He's already answered that.
Let me, let me read on. Uh, "The end-user demand will dictate the level of regular activity associated with the operation. However, as the applicant is the principal end-user of the product with fairly low projections, a better determination of additional traffic can be developed based on the equipment processing capability." Now, did you make any attempt to determine what the equipment processing capability would be on a daily basis?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No further questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Run away.
Okay, being, seeing the time, Mr. Tropoli, it's ten o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, I, if I, if I may, this is a special meeting, once again, my client paid for this meeting.
No, I, I understand, but...
I, I, I know, um, I, it just, if we could continue with the cross-examination, um, and maybe get the, get the cross-examination of my witnesses completed.
Okay. How many more witnesses do we have?
Two.
Two more? Okay.
Chairman, I, respectfully, uh, and I understand comments and desires, uh, I would cross-examine Mr. Kennedy, whom I deem to be extremely short. I would like to save my cross-examination from his caffine at the next meeting because I would like to save my cross-examination from his telephone at the next meeting because it will be quite lengthy.
Mr. Butler?
And I'm gonna, with all due respect, I would like to get the cross-examination of the witnesses done-
Let's see what we can get done tonight.
-for the next phase of this hearing at the next meeting.
Okay.
Let's just reflect, the time is ten PM right now, correct?
Yeah, but we don't have any further cases on behind us.
Mr. Kennedy, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Kennedy, may I remind you, you were previously sworn.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Kennedy, you prepared the plans for this project, did you not?
The site plans, yes, I did.
The site plan, the site plan was entered into evidence before the board.
Yes, it was.
Okay, now, with regard to the site plan, did you seek guidance from the manufacturer of this facility as to the traffic layout, the parking layouts, the location of the loading bins and the like?
Aztec gave us their layout of their manufactured product. How the bins relate to the silos, how the conveyors relate to the baghouse, everything that Catherine testified to, they provided to us. The layout of the site was done in conjunction, not only with Aztec, but with the applicant, with their years of knowledge of the asphalt business as well as my civil team.
Just briefly, going back one second, are you aware of any other proposed uses on this site other than the asphalt plant?
Yes, the uses that were approved under the minor site plan before the planning board. And I'm aware of the trucking uses that they testified to during Lance's testimony before this board.
That would be with regards to L-Nell paving?
He testified as to the trucking uses.
Are you aware of any other uses such as other businesses or processes, facilities to be located on this site?
Only what was approved through the minor site plan before the planning board.
Okay, so you were not aware of the import of that exhibit which talks in terms of future proposed uses?
I mean, I've seen the sign and I think that was part of the minor site plan, but I could be mistaken.
There was a minor site plan for companies known as Fabcore, Fabcon?
It's all trucking.
Pardon me?
It's just the trucking that they testified to.
Okay, now, with regard to the site plan, and you say you consulted with the representative from Aztec. Now, you've laid out on this plan six silos, have you not?
Six silos are shown on the plan, that's correct.
Okay, now, do you know what the capacity of each of those silos is?
To best of my knowledge, three hundred tons.
So, there's capability there of storing on a daily basis a minimum of one thousand eight hundred tons?
I don't know.
Well, the six times three hundred, isn't it?
You said daily. I don't know what the production values are and how they can store and what they store.
That's a fair response, so let's then talk about the production. Do you have any knowledge of what the production capacity of this plant is?
Catherine testified to that at length before the board. I can look back at my notes, but I'm sure you have it in the-
Well, you're aware of the fact, okay, you're aware of the fact that the testimony of the Aztec representative is that the manufacturing facility can produce four hundred tons of asphalt an hour?
I'm gonna object to that, him, Mr. Gazarovski, characterizing the testimony of Catherine Sutton because I don't believe that's what she actually testified to. She said that it could potentially produce a certain amount of asphalt, you know, under certain conditions depending on the mix. So, I think it's more than just a simple, hey, it's gonna be this number. There are a lot of variables that go into the amount of asphalt that's produced on an hour, an hourly basis.
But she testified that the capacity to produce asphalt-
I understand that, but she's not here, she's not under cross-examination.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, first of all, she's not here, and I understand that, but she's not here because the applicant chose not to have her here.
But you've already crossed-
Mr. Gazarovski, let's, for the record, I mean, she was cross, she was direct examined and cross-examined by you.
I didn't ask those questions.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
But let's, what was established in her testimony-
She's gone.
And it's in the record was that the manufacturing process itself could produce four hundred tons per hour.
That's her testimony, sir. Whatever she testified to, that's not his testimony. He did not testify to that.
Mr. Kennedy, do you acknowledge the fact, and if you don't know the answer, fine, that the manufacturing process of this plant, the testimony of the Aztec representative was that it could produce, could produce four hundred tons an hour?
Mr. Chairman, he's asking the same question again.
I agree. Mr. Gazarovski, that's her testimony. Let's leave it to his testimony now.
He's the, Mr. Chairman, he's the engineer that laid out a site plan that placed this-
I know, but he didn't lay out the site plan based on her, he used her model, what the square footage of her plant, they gave her, she gave him the design of the plant. He put that, he designed that into the site.
Okay.
As far as operation, that's, we have to leave that up to Catherine's testimony, sir.
Okay, fine, now, let me try to ask a question that'll satisfy your consensus. Did you design a plan with silos on it that could hold one thousand eight hundred tons of full capacity for the six silos?
Was that what Catherine gave you, the design?
Yes.
For the plant?
Actually, at the time, I didn't know how many tons they held, but those were the silos that the manufacturer provided.
Okay.
Did she give you a design to advise you as to how many tons of asphalt the plant can manufacture on a one-hour period?
Once again-
Hey, let him answer a question. Yes or no?
Actually, in the preparation of my site plans, I did not have that number.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, just briefly, and I know this was covered perhaps in the site layout. Did you take, did you give any consideration in your site layout as to trucks queuing on the site?
Yes, sir, yes, I did.
What was that number, if I may ask?
Well, I testified, perhaps, the exhibit, Mr. Howard, the color rendering. So, it was my testimony that during daytime use-
And I'm sorry, Jim, and just for the record, Eileen, I think this is A. Sorry, I just want to make sure that we're pointing to dressing and doing it correctly.
Color rendering in the site plan, A twenty-four?
A twenty-four, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, it was my testimony during daytime use, there is-
It doesn't reflect.
Oh, well, great, the laser pointer's not moving. But in the entrance that's adjacent to Cranberry Road would have a double stack entrance as well as vehicle pull-in spaces that are angled so that vehicles could back in and then pull out forward. And I believe the total stacking was- I'm gonna have to look through my notes, Mr. Gazarovski, but I believe it was in excess of fifty vehicles that could stack and park within the incoming lanes. And the testimony was that we wanted to provide a factor of safety against vehicles queuing on Yellowbrook Road. That was the safety issue that we were concerned with and therefore, an abundance of onsite stacking as well as vehicle parking areas or queuing areas are provided onsite.
So, if you had the ability to queue fifty vehicles, was that what you testified to?
Yes.
And then you could also have other vehicles in the park, other vehicles in the parking area, you're waiting to get into the queue, correct?
I don't understand the question. If I have a queue of vehicles, could I have other people queuing to wait for the queue? That doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, fine, so what you're saying is you could have fifty vehicles queuing plus those vehicles that are entering and going into the drive-out, going under these silos?
Well, I was considering that area, up to the silos.
You consider, queuing is fifty vehicles coming from the bottom of the silo out towards the street, total of fifty vehicles a day?
A day? No, I'm talking about the physical limitation of the site, not traffic, not tonnage, just the physical conditions of the site, the two incoming driveways plus the pull-in spaces that are depicted on the exhibit.
That's what it could handle.
That's the queue, that's my, that was the queue before vehicles would need to, would perhaps overflow to Yellowbrook Road. Obviously, fifty vehicles is far in excess of our need.
Now, it's fifty vehicles, is that trucks or is that cars?
Trucks.
Mr. Kennedy, just one of your questions. Now, there's also an area on this site which, at the present time, is not being used, is that not so?
That's correct. There's approximately thirteen acres of the site that are currently impervious that we intend to remove the pavement from, remove the gravel from, and landscape and provide an enhanced landscaping. We're providing buffers, berms, trees, those areas are not being used on the site.
Isn't there also an area on the site that is covered with impervious surface that, I believe, I believe the testimony was that at a later time it could be utilized for a recycling facility?
Yes, that's what it says, class B recycling facility stockpile areas.
Okay, and what's the size of that particular, that's all impervious surface, is it not?
That's correct. So, on, and I'm just gonna scale it for simplicity. One area of approximately three hundred by three hundred and fifty and one area of approximately two hundred and thirty by three hundred and fifty.
What does it come up to in acres?
I don't know. I can get a calculator and figure it out if you need to.
I don't need it. Now, my understanding would be that this class B recycling could only be utilized if, in fact, the applicant secures a use variance for the operation of this asphalt.
I'm going to object to this question. The class B recycling application is not before this board. This board made a rule in the beginning, it doesn't have jurisdiction over the class B recycling operation.
I agree.
Now, Mr. Kennedy, if, in fact, this applicant were to secure a use variance to manufacture asphalt, he, as a matter of right, would be able to operate-
Once again, I mean, I'm objecting because you're going, what you do is you ask, you keep asking the same questions and you're making statements in your questions. You're not actually asking a question. The class B was not part of, is not part of this application. The class B application is before Monmouth County, and that's the proper venue. That's the proper jurisdiction for that.
It's not my question.
Ask your question.
A question is, if, in fact, this applicant were to secure a use variance to manufacture concrete, as a matter of right, he would get an exception to also recycle a wrap, would he not?
I, once again, I'm gonna place my objection because that has nothing to do with Mr. Kennedy's testimony. Mr. Kennedy's testimony was regarding how the site plan was set up.
Assuming, assuming for the sake of argument, he could not, he needed and could not secure a class B permit, what would be the intended use of that vacant land?
Once again, I'm gonna object to the question. Mr. Kennedy did not testify about class B application or securing a class B application or what would happen if a class B application wasn't secured. That's not-
I agree. I don't think he testified to this land or that area, sir.
It's on his site plan.
Sir?
It's on his site plan.
He didn't test, there was no testimony dealing with that because-
Then let me ask him this question. What is the purpose of that large vacant space of land on the site plan?
Well, currently, it's shown as a class B recycling facility and the testimony was that wrap could be processed as a customary incidental use to the asphalt plant. Asphalt plant, you heard the testimony of the applicant. Wrap is typically incorporated into an asphalt mix. So, those areas would be used to store and process that recycled asphalt product.
But that's exactly my point. He's using that for the recycling of wrap, which is permitted if, in fact, you have an asphalt plant. So, it's not gonna be vacant land.
I didn't say that was vacant.
Pardon me?
All the green to the right, all the green to the back.
I understand, I understand what green is. I'm talking about the area which is shown on there as being completely vacant. This applicant, if he secures a use variance, intends to utilize it for recycling wrap, correct?
Well, you're mischaracterizing my charac, I never said that was vacant. It actually has callouts right there that says recycling, recycling facility, stockpile, equipment storage. It's all, I never said that portion was going to be vacant. I'm talking about the thirteen acres that we're converting from impervious surface now. You asked me the question.
I understand.
I just want to clarify. I don't want to mislead anyone.
I don't want to, I don't want to mislead you either. I understand that with regard to the site as it presently exists, you're gonna take thirteen acres of pervious surface.
Impervious.
Can I finish, please? It's presently impervious. I'm sorry, you corrected me correctly. You're taking thirteen acres of impervious surface and you're gonna utilize it and convert it to pervious surface by way of plantings and things such as that, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, what I'm talking about is the other acreage which you just, I thought computed out, which is shown on the plan as just simply being vacant. If, in fact, you get a use variance to construct an asphalt plant, you're gonna use that area there for recycling and storing wrap.
Well, I guess I just, why do you say that I show it as vacant? I don't show it as vacant.
How do you show it?
I show it right there, class B recycling facility, equipment storage, class B recycling facility, stockpile, and then I have an equipment storage area. I'm calling out to it.
But what I'm saying is, if you get an approval from this board for a use variance, you don't need a class B license. You can recycle wrap and store it basically as a matter of right and it should be part of your site plan.
I appreciate the stipulation, but I don't know that. There was testimony, not my testimony, but testimony of the applicant when he asked, "What happens if you don't get the class B?" He said, "We'll simply use it to recycle asphalt for the asphalt plant." That's all I'm re, I'm just trying to move things along, I'm not-
So, this site, we're talking about noise or we're talking about traffic, it should include that area there as well, should it not?
It does include, I think his testimony was it did include that area.
My site plan includes that area. The engineering design, the stormwater management, the landscaping, the lighting. It includes that, that, those areas, that that's part of the site plan.
Any further questions?
Yeah, now that we're speaking in terms of using it to recycle wrap, now, isn't it so that when unrecycled wrap is brought onto a site, only a portion of it can be utilized for the manufacturing of asphalt, correct?
I don't know.
We're getting into operational-
You speak in terms of wrap being stockpiled. How high do those stockpiles go?
I think that was testified to.
Correct.
How high?
I don't think this witness testified to that.
Yeah, but he's designing a site, Mr. Chairman. He's designing a site to store asphalt.
Sir?
When he designed it, how high did he contemplate the asphalt would be piled?
That actually wasn't within my, that, I didn't, I created the area for it. The height, I wasn't concerned about being that it was so far back from Cranberry Road, Cranberry Road and Yellowbrook Road and the fact that we were providing berms of landscaping and trees. I didn't, I didn't even consider the height of the asphalt piles that could be there. I mean, there's conventional limitations to the pile heights, obviously, especially if you're just bringing in-
Well, the operator testified to that.
Correct.
Already.
I have a further question.
Thank you.
Mr. Butler, at ten thirty, I don't even want to get started with another witness. I really don't.
Okay.
Mr. Tropoli?
Mr. Chairman, next week we have a meeting.
Yes, sir.
Speaking with our administrative secretary, we could change a couple of things around and possibly develop a couple of hours next week to continue this application. I know it's of great interest to, not only to the public, but to the board and to the applicant and everyone here to move it forward, so-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tropoli, respectfully, the last time we were here, we agreed upon two dates and I adjusted my calendar accordingly.
And what's your availability, Mr. Gazarovski?
I'll be back here on the seventeenth and if you want me to know if I have a date in between then, I'll check my calendar to the office.
We, I would like to move forward if we can.
Yes.
Yeah, I really would.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, when we were here-
I understand, I understand that.
Tonight and the seventeenth.
I understand that, Mr. Gazarovski, but I would like, if your calendar is free, I would like to move it on the tenth.
Okay, I'll check.
Let's go to the tenth.
How are we gonna determine that?
What is that, next week?
Do you have a calendar? It's a week from today.
Most people carry their calendars on them.
Monday, December tenth.
Next Monday.
December tenth.
Next Monday.
Okay, fine, I'll check my calendar.
Is there any way that Mr. Gazarovski could check his calendar presently?
Yes, sir. Is there any way you could check your calendar?
Now?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely no way.
Most people carry their calendars in their phone.
Well, I don't carry my calendar, Mr.-
Okay.
You wanna frisk me and see whether I have it or not?
I don't, I don't.
Mr. Tropoli?
Then let's just carry it to the tenth.
To the tenth?
Yeah. Because the public has a right to know and then if something changes-
And I also have to check and see whether my experts are available on that date.
Okay, we're gonna-
Well, we're gonna do-
My experts are available.
Okay.
We gotta, we gotta move this application. It's not, it's getting to a point that it's not fair to the public at this point in time. Not only that, but not- that it's not fair to the public at this point in time. Not only that, but not fair to the board, too. We gotta move as if we can.
So, what, what are we leaving here tonight as?
We're moving it to the 10th.
What if I'm not available? What if my experts aren't available?
Do you have your, how many experts do you have? Yes. I know.
Right.
We got...
I, I relied upon dates that were given to me, okay?
I understand, sir.
Those are the dates the chair gave me, and I agreed to them.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Gazarovski is not being prejudiced by, by having a meeting on December 10th?
What's that?
You're not, you're, you're not being prejudiced by having a meeting on December 10th?
What if my experts aren't available on the 10th?
What was said, Mr. Gazarovski, was that maybe we're gonna give the public an opportunity to ask questions to those witnesses that you've already cross-examined if you're unavailable?
On that day?
Yes. To allow at least some of these people that have been here for months and months and months who have a, a series of questions, to ask those questions and keep this process moving along.
If I am unavailable, I will agree that the process can move forward, and the public can ask all the questions anymore.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move, okay, I, I gotta find my agenda here. Okay, case number BA18-06, LNL paving company Inc., is gonna be carried to December 10th, 7:30, with no further notice. And if Mr. Gazarovski and his professionals are not available, it will be open to public questions of the witnesses that have already been cross-examined. Is that correct, Mr. Troply?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Is that correct?
Without further public notice, is that what you're saying?
Without further public notice, and if Mr. Gazarovski and his witnesses aren't available, then it will open it to public, to the witnesses that have already been cross-examined.
That's on the record and agreed to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any further business to the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? Zoning Board adjustments adjourned at 10:25.